Do you have a position on rent control?
I don't support rent control, you know, at the level that was recently passed in St. Paul. You know, I do support the need for everyone in Minneapolis to have safe and stable housing. You know, the reality is that rent can rent control can often do more harm than good for the groups that it's really intending to help. We've seen affordable housing project construction in St. Paul drop off precipitously.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
You have the balls to stop, stop this.
I've, 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 I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
It's very free form.
Okay, that sounds good.
And feel free to interrupt me and I maybe I'll interrupt you too.
That sounds good. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to meet you, John. Thanks for, thanks for reaching out.
Yeah, this, this will be fun, I hope. This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and you may have heard there's a city council elections in Minneapolis in 2023 and I am join, I'm gonna do a series with Ward 12 and hopefully the other wards do, but I'm starting with Ward 12 and Luther Ranheim is one of four candidates running for city council in Ward 12 here in Minneapolis. Welcome to the podcast.
Well, thank you, John. I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you today.
So I would never run for office personally, especially not in this environment. It's, times are bad. It's, it's a stressful job. People will get mad at you. And so when I think of what, what might drive me or someone like me to run for office, I can think of like specific issues. And so I'm wondering to start off the show here. If you can name like two or three things that like moved you to contact a council member to attend a public meeting, local issues I'm talking about here in Minneapolis, like what are, what are the couple of issues that, I know you got opinions on lots of issues, but what are like the two or three things that really drive you would cause, would have caused you to contact your council member?
Sure. Thanks, thanks for that question. That's a great question. You know, I think first and foremost, the issue that's on top of everyone's mind right now is public safety. And that's been an issue that has impacted us deeply in Ward 12, as with all of the city and quite frankly, across the state and our country and the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd. And so, you know, I am very interested in convening a conversation around public safety and being an advocate for our ward at City Hall. And so that's probably right off the top, one of the top things that motivated me to jump in this race. You know, another area that is something that I have been seeing a lot with my own eyes as I engage with my neighbors is support for seniors. You know, I think we are seeing our senior population that has really contributed to the vitality of our community feeling isolated and lonely. And I am running to be an advocate for our seniors in our community to make sure that we have the city services to allow them to age in place, to be a vital part of our community as they're aging and to feel welcome and wanted and needed. So that may not be an issue that other candidates talk about much, but it's one that's near and dear to me and something that would motivate me to step up. Aside from more broadly, the reason why I am getting into this is because I have lived in Ward 12 for 22 years. So I have deep, deep lived experience in the ward. I care about my ward and I want to see, you know, us do better in our community. And so stepping forward as a community informed advocate at City Hall is a great way that I can step up and give back to this ward that has given me so much.
So I did notice the, the senior issue. You don't see that on a lot of websites. So I'm thinking, when we think about public safety and also the issue of supporting seniors, can you think of like some actions you've taken the last couple of years to like take some leadership on those issues? Or like speak out on those issues, like specific actions you've taken?
Yeah. I mean, when it comes to public safety, you know, one of the actions that I took right in the days following the murder of George Floyd was to help convene our block around watching out for each other in those immediate days when there was so much uncertainty. And I think many residents were quite frankly scared about what was happening. And I would, you know, attribute that to the outside forces that were coming into our city to try to take advantage of that situation. And so, you know, that's a way, an area that I stepped forward to convene with my neighbors, whether it was organizing our nightly block watch to procuring fire extinguishers in case we needed them. So just informing the neighbors around here what was happening and how we could all look out for each other. So that's one concrete way. You know, when it comes to seniors, you know, ways that I've stepped up have come from a personal level. I have aging parents and I have helped them navigate the move from the house that they lived in for 48 years, the house I grew up in. And so I've been looking at seniors from the perspective of the lived experience that I'm having right now, helping my own parents navigate a changing life circumstance. And so, you know, I haven't specifically spoken out in community about seniors, but I think that the lived experience that I have, also building on experience that I had when I worked with the Alzheimer's Association, where I was helping to raise philanthropic support to support those that are faced with that devastating disease. And so that also informs part of my interest in this and ways that I have actively engaged in this community and supporting seniors.
So quick question, are you somebody who chose Minneapolis? Have you always been here?
Great question. Yeah, I grew up near Lake Nakamas in South Minneapolis, went away to college and then came back home because I did choose Minneapolis. I had the chance to travel around the country a little bit after college. And one of the things that I learned in living in other cities is that I love Minneapolis and I wanted to live here. And I moved to Ward 12 soon after returning from college because I really love this part of the city.
Why, why choose Minneapolis quickly? What are the things you would choose to live here and not anyplace else or Ward 12?
Sure. You know, first and foremost is just the physical beauty of our city. It's a great, you know, we have top park system in the country. We are so accessible to the rest of the country from Minneapolis. And so, you know, enjoying travel and being able to get out. You know, we are centrally located, so that makes things easy. But also, and I think most importantly, what draws me to Minneapolis is the quality of people here. And it's why I wanted to return, growing up in South Minneapolis, going through the Minneapolis Public Schools. It's who I am. Minneapolis is home to me. And, you know, I've had great opportunities in life because of this city. And that's really why I choose to be here and to engage in making our city better.
One thing I have noticed on your website is the word pragmatic. And when I think of the word pragmatic, it often feels like a reaction against something else. Like, uh, like I, I will, I will be the bulwark against the, the forces of pie in the sky. And so I'm, you must have chosen the word pragmatic intentionally. And I wonder if that's, is it a reaction against something? And if so, what, what, what is the meaning of pragmatic to you?
Sure. That's a great question. You know, I don't think I chose the word pragmatic as a reaction to something else. I, I really chose pragmatic as an assessment of who I am and how I show up. How I work with others to build coalitions, create community and really get things done. And, you know, as I think about how I would act as a city council member, I would hope to be a pragmatic voice that can bring all types of constituencies, thoughts and ideas and people together and really form pragmatic, common sense solutions. So again, I don't think that's necessarily a reaction to something. I think it's just who I am and who I've always been.
Okay, switching to public safety and police, what's the city council's role in ensuring public safety? I, I think we've all come to learn it's, it's the police at least, it's the mayor's job. We've had a big debate about government structure and we've kind of cemented his role as the boss of the executive branch. When I think about police staffing, which has been a big topic for city council members and the police budget, that seems immune to what any particular council member thinks. I think if we had reelected our previous council majority, people like Steve Fletcher and Philippe Cunningham, we would be on the exact same staffing trajectory that we are now because we are many, many years away from hitting what anyone like Michael Rainville would think would be the appropriate level. Like, we're, we're just on a trajectory and it doesn't seem that whether you elect someone who is, you know, stereotypically pro-police or, or defund the police, if I can use that phrase, seems immune to that. So what do you see as the city council's role in ensuring public safety?
Well, that's a great question. And, you know, first and foremost, it's to really listen to our community and what is our community looking for? And, you know, I think public safety is a top issue on the minds of Ward 12 residents and, you know, it's a complex issue. You know, I think many residents feel that we need a greater police presence, but many feel, you know, intimidated and unsafe around the police, unfortunately. And so, you know, I look at the way the voters responded in Ward 12 to the structure question around the ballot question number two. And, you know, voters want to have a structure of public safety in place. Now, where the city council, I think, can come into play is to ensure that we have a strong public oversight structure of our policing. And I think what's been happening and the structure that's currently in place has not worked very well. It is not fully staffed. Several of the positions in that oversight structure have been vacant for too long. And so that is one thing where I think the city council can strongly advocate for, and I would see as my role, to advocate for a strong oversight structure.
What did you think, what did you think of our recent debate over the, the police oversight ordinance? Did you follow that at all?
I followed it a bit. And, you know, I think that it's, you know, like I said, I think the last or the, the former system in place, the former oversight structure was not working because we had so many vacancies. Really want, would want to get in and understand exactly why did we fail in that regard? And what could we do better?
I could tell you why that failed. We, well, the, the mayor and the council president decided we're gonna, we're gonna leave those positions vacant because we've got an idea for a new structure. And so for most of the year, the, the former Police Oversight Commission just was, was left non-functioning on purpose.
Yeah. You know, and I think within oversight, you know, an area that I think is fairly nuanced and that I think is not getting talked about enough is this whole notion around discipline versus coaching. And Minnesota requires that if a police officer is disciplined, that the, that discipline is made public. And I think that we have seen the workaround often employed around coaching. And that allows these disciplinary times to not be put forward publicly and transparently. And so that's another area that I would like to examine further and say, okay, how can we eliminate the use of this coaching term to avoid transparency and oversight and get back on track with true oversight?
So what do you do in the case of coaching? Do you, what is the council's role there? I think of that as like the mayor, the mayor's thing? Do you, what do you do to convince the mayor to change his, his policies over police?
Yeah, I mean, I think really the, the council's role is around, you know, what are, the term coaching is being used by the police department. So I think pushing back and, and working with the mayor to make sure that we are putting forward, you know, expectations around what they call disciplinary action. They don't, the, the police department does not have to use the coaching terminology to avoid that. And so I would be looking to push against that and work with the mayor. And also I would like to see us partner with the new police chief, who I am excited to work with, to hopefully bring top-down reform to the police department. And this would be one of the first questions that I would ask him when I sit down with him is how can we actually provide transparency in the disciplinary process? Because I think the public is owed that.
Let's talk about government structure. Do you, first, what do you think of our new government structure, our strong mayor system of government? And then number two, how does the city council, I think, I'll give my opinion. I think, I think the mayor has too much power and it's more important than ever that the, the city council holds the mayor accountable. But I don't see the current city council majority doing that. And do you feel strongly that, that while in office, you, you would push hard to hold the mayor accountable?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, right now it's a new time on the city council with the new structure in place. And I think all of the aspects of that are still getting ironed out. And I think the city council is trying to live into what do they, how do they show up as a legislative body? And how do they work with a strong mayor? I was in favor of the strong mayor amendment because I believe that we need to have one leader where they are ultimately responsible for what happens and that is then informed in policymaking by the city council. Now, have there been challenges? Sure. But I am sure that we can work together to figure out what does that relationship look like? So I would be very interested to get onto the city council and start, you know, figuring out where, where does our power lie and how do we push back? How do we hold the administration accountable? While at the same time partnering with the mayor to make sure that the mayor is getting what, what he needs or they need to succeed as well.
I'm curious, in particular, like what, what did you see as a failing of the previous government structure? Like what specifically like went wrong because we didn't have a strong mayor under the old system?
I mean, one of the, I think the, the main points that I saw and what caused me to vote for a strong mayor system was that you had 13 bosses. There was not one person that was the, where the buck stops when it comes to city governance. And so I felt like leadership was too diffuse when it was spread evenly amongst a strong city council and 13 members. And so I, that's why I advocated just for a better functioning standpoint of government. I thought that we could do better. And I think that at least clarifies things more as to who's in charge and how are we going to move forward and also ultimately advance our city and get things done for our city. Because I, I think it gummed up the works too many times and we weren't able to get effective policy passed through the city because of the old system. So I'm open to, you know, living into it. I feel positive about it. And, you know, I know that there's challenges, but I'm excited about the new direction for our city in that way.
Can you think of a failing in particular though? Are you speaking in general terms about failing to implement policy? Can you think of something that really just got screwed up real bad because we didn't have a strong mayor?
Well, I mean, I, I guess I can't, you know, right offhand think of a specific failing at this juncture. It's something that I'd probably wanna kind of look back on and, you know, be able to get back to you on that. But I don't have a specific answer to that question.
Okay. So here, here's a hot button. Let's talk about housing and zoning. Are you a fan of the Minneapolis 2040 plan? It's currently, we're going through a long, long legal battle right now. City is defending it. Are you a fan? Would you be supportive of implementing the policies contained in that plan as we go forward?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Minneapolis is growing and, you know, while it's great, it's gonna come with growing pains. And, you know, I think the 2040 plan is by and large a very good vision for the future of Minneapolis. You know, if a homeowner, homeowner wants to convert their property or rental property or a triplex, you know, it's their prerogative to do so. You know, on the same token, it's also their prerogative to remain a single family home. So if they choose to do that, they should be allowed to do that. You know, I, I think that the 2040 plan allows for both outcomes. But most importantly, the 2040 plan and what I really like about the 2040 plan and why I have supported the 2040 plan is that it encourages high-density development around transit corridors. And that's really what I want to see us continuing to live into. And I think that's one of the best parts of the 2040 plan and, you know, why I was supportive from the get-go.
So speaking of the 2040 plan, the city is currently taking feedback on the land use rezoning study as it continues to implement the 2040 plan. So in other words, after figuring out, you know, the size and form of new buildings that are allowed, we've moved on to how they can be used. So land use.
Yep.
So do you, is commercial zoning too restrictive in Minneapolis? If I want to open up, for example, a small bookshop or coffee shop on the first floor of a duplex on a side street, an interior street, should I be able to do that? Not talking about like putting in parking lots, but I'm sure you've been to cities where, even here in Minneapolis, like something that looks like a home by all appearances has a tiny little cafe on the first floor. What do you think about that? Cause the city is, we're, we're considering that right now and I wonder what your position is.
You know, I'm in favor of that along more high density corridors. So like I, you know, I think the example you talk about, you know, like you look at along Hennepin Avenue and there are several buildings that are duplexes that have commercial businesses on the first floor. Now, if you look in the Howe neighborhood where I live, you know, on any given street, I think if you tried to put a coffee shop in, you could have some significant issues, whether it's parking and accessibility for all citizens in the area to use a business that is in, you know, maybe a first floor of a residential house. So I would be concerned about that. So I would advocate that we, you know, continue to.
And Luther, I think we clipped your, your last part of your answer there. If you want to go back. Hopefully, if it doesn't sound coherent, listeners, please understand that we had technical difficulties and Luther may not remember what he just said.
Well, in general, you know, the point I was making is that I think we advocate for our strong commercial nodes in Ward 12 and making sure that we are helping businesses to activate along those corridors. So I would not necessarily be in favor of a zoning where we would have a commercial business in the middle of a residential street, you know, and just any house for a couple of concerns. First of all, accessibility. Most homes in Ward 12 may not have the easily accessible structure of the property to allow anyone to come and use that property. The other aspect of that is parking and being a good neighbor and making sure that, you know, the other homeowners on that street or other visitors are not impacted by a lot of traffic coming and going. So I use the example of Hennepin Avenue. You know, some of those houses are duplexes that have a coffee shop on the first floor. And again, that's a commercial node and I think that works much better. So I would advocate to continue investing there and, and not look to do as much investment in commercial zoning in the middle of housing areas of the city.
Let's talk about homelessness response. What, what do you think of the city's response to homeless encampments? Evictions of encampments? Is the city handling that well? And how would you potentially push for doing that better?
You know, this is a really complex situation, you know, and we can't continue to sustain the status quo when it comes to these homeless encampments. You know, we, we cannot have unsupervised encampments that contain health and safety risks for the unhoused. And, you know, we can't continue to have these encampments that are torn up every month by the city. You know, when sites are identified for the unhoused, the council should, you know, look to convene spaces where we can bring together all parties, whether it's the housed, unhoused, and then, you know, experts around working with housing and homelessness to talk about these issues. And I think, you know, council members can really lead in these discussions in an effort to achieve common ground, you know, and compromise amongst residents. Because I think we need to balance making sure that there are services and transitional opportunities for the unhoused. But we also need to make sure that the residents in the areas are also safe. And so I think it's a balancing act. You know, and there may be a way that the city could identify spaces where we can gather the unhoused in safe ways that have the wraparound services. And I also think we can't continue to criminalize poverty. You know, this house cat and mouse game of chasing a homeless encampment and then closing it down and then another one springing up and closing it down is not sustainable. So I want to get to the bottom of that and figure out more productive ways that we can convene all of the experts on this to address this problem once and for all, because it's heartbreaking that we continue to see this situation popping up. And, you know, I, I want to do everything I can to bring the right stakeholders together and also investigating upstream solutions. So whether it's dealing with chemical dependency and drug addiction issues to working with our veterans to make sure that they have the resources they need. So I think there are other ways that we can address this that are more sustainable and hopefully, you know, maybe look to other cities as well. And what have they done that has worked to address this problem?
So this is a longstanding problem and I wonder if you have a diagnosis as to what is going wrong? Because this predates the pandemic. We've had encampments. You can go back and look at old local TV news stories from, I don't know, seven, eight years ago at this point? Six, seven, eight years ago about the encampment problem and we can't seem to get a handle on it. Where, what is the failure point in the system? Why, why is this continuing to happen? Why does it seem like no one has a solution that works?
You know, that's, I think, the million dollar question. And, you know, I think some of the failure points, I think, are something I touched on just a moment ago. It's really looking upstream and what are the root causes of homelessness? And how is we, how are we as a society addressing those root causes? So, you know, how are we helping to provide support for those that are afflicted by chemical dependency and addiction issues? And, you know, making sure that they are getting the healthcare and support that they need are key. And I think we've failed our veterans as a society and we constantly see that. And a large makeup of the homeless population are veterans that also have chemical dependency and addiction issues. And so, you know, that's where I would start. And, you know, I often look at the way the philanthropic sector has responded to housing and homelessness issues. And it usually is upstream in providing resources to treat the root causes of homelessness to hopefully start alleviating, alleviating the situation. And we've seen, you know, good models for that and what Catholic Charities has done in downtown St. Paul in helping, you know, develop a center for housing and transitional care and connecting with resources and ultimately getting homeless communities on the right track towards employment and sustainability. And so I think there's a lot we can do. I don't know if there's a magic bullet to figure out exactly we can fix homelessness with just this one thing, but I think it's bringing the right stakeholders together and again, really addressing the root causes.
How, how is the campaign going? Are you, are you calling voters at this point? Are you door knocking? What, what does the campaign at this stage do?
Yeah, thank you for asking. You know, it's, it's going really well. You know, I launched my campaign kind of softly in the month of December and just getting, you know, the apparatus of a campaign built. It's been a good learning experience for me, you know, building a website and, you know, getting connected with, you know, my network and, and people that would support me. My main focus right now is the DFL endorsement process, which is coming up on March 14th with precinct caucuses. So I am spending my time connecting with delegates and having conversations about, you know, what is it they care about? What are the issues that matter most to them? And what do they want to see lifted up into this race for city council? And so that's really been my primary focus is reaching out and building relationships in our community, connecting with delegates. And, you know, I hope in a way demonstrating the type of city council member I would be, which is being available to the community, listening, engaging and willing to sit down and talk about the issues.
Do you have any thoughts? This is another hot button. You're gonna hear a lot about this. We've talked a little about parking already. What do you, what do you think of the city's transportation action plan? His commitment to, to transit and bike lanes and bus lanes? And maybe we lose a little parking to put, put all those good things in. There's a limited amount of space in the public right of way. You don't, here, here's an oversight Luther. I don't think you have a transportation section on your website when you talk about building websites.
Yeah, you're, you're right. I definitely don't, you know, there, there's a lot of issues that I want to focus on in this race and, and transportation is one of the areas that I'm definitely hearing about as I talk to delegates. You know, and I, I think this is a nuanced issue. You know, a lot of it is working with the Met Council and public safety. Because I think right now what I'm hearing from a lot of people is they don't feel safe using public transportation. We see that, you know, nearby in Ward nine where the intersection of Hiawatha and the light rail comes together. And we, we've just seen violence there last week with four people shot. And so I am concerned about the public safety aspect of transportation because we do have a great transit network as far as our bus network and, you know, high speed or, you know, the bus transit ways, looking at like the Chicago Avenue line and what is hopefully coming along Lake Street with the 21 route to help get people around and to and from jobs. But people need to feel safe taking transit to get to and from their jobs. And so, you know, I want to see better coordination between the Minneapolis Police and the Met Council. And, you know, it's a multi-jurisdictional question when it comes to transit because it's not just a city-controlled operation. It really is the Met Council and working together with all of the players. You know, and I think bike lanes obviously plays into that. It's really an, an area where, again, we need to find the, the right balance. I am in favor, you know, of having a strong bike infrastructure. I am in favor, you know, of having a strong bike infrastructure, especially as we look at climate change and wanting to make sure that we are addressing the use of cars in our city. That being said, there are many people who, you know, need to get around via car, and they also need to be able to park near businesses in order to access them, because biking might not be an option for them. And so I think it's a balanced approach to make sure that we are designing bikeways at a, you know, a regular enough interval throughout the city so that we have good bike infrastructure. And we have done that as a city. We have really leaned into bike infrastructure for a long time, and it's really put us on the map nationally. But I think that, again, it has to be balanced with the need for all citizens of our community to access the businesses and services and parks and, you know, all aspects of the city. And so, you know, continuing to work on that and bringing the right people together to make sure that you can get around via, via bike, you can get around via car if you need to, and you can get around via transit. So it's, it's a bit, bit of a, you know, complex situation, but I think it's one that's worth, you know, the time of the city council to keep leaning into and advocating for the right solutions.
So you said balance a bunch of times there, and I, am I misinterpreting to think that maybe you believe the city has gone too far? Has the city struck the right balance when it comes to bike lanes? Or do you need to reel it back in?
I don't think we've gone too far. You know, I think there is room to continue doing more. And, you know, there's, there's areas where I think we can even improve our bike infrastructure. You know, I'll admit, I am not an active bicyclist myself, so I have not been a regular user, but from the people I have talked to and what I've seen is that we can do more. So I don't necessarily think we've gone too far. But I also, like I said, with, you know, we, we have to make sure that people that are using cars or need to use cars because biking is not an option for them can still also access business. So, you know, bus lanes are great, promoting other modes of transit other than cars is great, but I think we also need to make sure that we're accessible for everyone.
Are we at risk of making it too hard to drive in Minneapolis?
That's a good question. You know, I often feel like ways to, you know, the method, the tools that have been put in place to calm traffic are a good thing. And so if it takes a little longer to drive across town, I don't think that's a bad thing. You know, and we've seen, I think, since the pandemic especially, a noticeable increase in speeding and traffic has been, become unsafe for pedestrians. And, you know, that's the other part of this that we, we haven't even touched on is just pedestrian infrastructure and making sure that it is safe to cross thoroughfares and to, to get to businesses and get from the bus or the light rail to your school or your place of employment. And so, you know, I, I am all in favor of calming traffic and making sure that we just, you know, have a good, a strong approach to multimodal transportation in our city.
Have you driven the new Lindale Avenue?
Yes, I have.
Well, what do you think of that? Are you familiar with the changes that have been made? Now, you've driven it before and after, right?
Yes, and I think, you know, that's one of the areas that it was one of the most unsafe for pedestrians in our city. And we constantly saw accidents happening on Lindale because people were racing up and down that street in the four lanes that were available for cars. And so I commend the move that was made to put in those pedestrian safe medians in the middle, especially at 27th Street, where there was a particularly large number of incidents with pedestrians and cars. And so I think using a model like that on other key arteries through our city is a great idea.
What did you think of the four to three lane conversion aspect of the Lindell? Or four to three lane conversions in general? What do you think of that?
I, I think four to three lane conversions make a lot of sense because they are going to calm traffic down, and then they also have dedicated turn lanes at key intersections. So I, I think that's a good thing.
Okay. Oh, the, the pedestrian who was killed at Lake Nacomas, is that in Ward 12?
That is in Ward 11, but I know that intersection well. And I think Cedar Avenue, where it comes over the Lake Nacomas Bridge and accelerates onto what becomes a highway, has always been a problem there. You know, they've tried traffic mitigation efforts at the intersections of Lake Nacomas Parkway and Cedar, as well as Edgewater Boulevard. And I knew they, I know that they just, you know, finished a whole redesign of that intersection, and it's clearly something, clear that something failed there if we're still having dangerous pedestrian issues. So that's definitely, you know, a model of where work needs to continue to be done to figure out the best and most safe way to make pedestrians the priority, especially around our parkways.
You've got a section on climate change on your website? We've talked a little bit about transportation here, which is a factor in climate change. I wonder, I wonder if you've got some specific actions you'd like to take? I'm going to quote from your website here. "We have reached the point of no return on climate change, and individual action can only achieve so much. We have a great opportunity to make significant strides on climate change at the municipal level." What do you see as the great opportunities?
Yeah, I think, you know, first and foremost, it's really advocating and working with business owners around sustainability and sustainable practices. So from the standpoint of recycling and composting of garbage, and we've seen that really work when it's been implemented and enforced. The other areas that I see that we can make a strong difference are around renewable energy and working with businesses and property owners to install solar as an energy option that can generate power for those businesses, but also most likely send net power back into the grid. So that's an area that I would like to see us investigate. The other thing that I think that we should be doing citywide is looking at how do we encourage electric car use? I mean, if you've been watching TV this year, you've seen the explosion of commercials for electric cars. And more and more, I think that if businesses can make, they'll be able to set themselves apart as a business if they have electric charging infrastructure on site. And so that's another area where I would like to work with our businesses to encourage that type of infrastructure investment so that those that want to use electric cars or other types of electric mobility can get around, but also get charged so that they can continue on their way throughout our city.
Luther, I apologize, I skipped over the most hot button issue of all, or maybe not the most, but rent control. Do you have an address that on the website? Do you have a position on rent control? And what is it?
Yes, I do have a position on rent control. You know, I don't support rent control, you know, at the level that was recently passed in St. Paul. You know, I do support the need for everyone in Minneapolis to have safe and stable housing. You know, the reality is that rent, rent control can often do more harm than good for the groups that it's really intending to help. You know, as we're seeing in St. Paul, that 3% threshold is not sustainable for developers. And as financing falls through for those projects due to this ordinance in St. Paul, you know, construction on those projects has stalled altogether. We've seen affordable housing project, construction in St. Paul drop off precipitously. It stayed relatively stable in Minneapolis. And so, you know, I would consider supporting rent control at a level that balances the sustainability of rent payments with sustainable financing for multi-unit housing projects. And it's clear that 3% isn't that level.
So St. Paul, what do you think of the modifications that St. Paul made to their rent control ordinance? Because they, they recently modified it.
They did. And I, I think, you know, it's a step in the right direction, especially to spur on new development. And, you know, we see this, you know, a great case in point for this over at the new Highland Bridge Development, which is adjacent to Ward 12, right over in Highland in St. Paul. And many of the areas that were slated for affordable housing development are sitting dormant right now with tumbleweeds blowing through them or, or snowdrifts, probably more appropriately at this point in time. Construction is completely halted. And so I am hopeful that what St. Paul passed is going to incentivize the developers that it's signed on to be part of that project to come back to the table and get, get to work in building the infrastructure that's needed. Because we do have a housing crisis, and we need to make sure that we are addressing it in a smart way.
So let's say the Minneapolis policy, what, what comes up for a vote ultimately or what ends up on the ballot, had an exemption for new construction? Maybe it, I think St. Paul also did a partial vacancy decontrol with just cause of eviction. If, if that modified St. Paul policy came up, would you support that one? What, what changes would you need to see? Is it just the 3% number?
I mean, again, I want to bring everyone together to find out what that right number is, and that's, you know, is 3%? You know, it's, it's probably not the right number based on what we've seen. So I think, again, I think St. Paul has done a good job coming back to the drawing board. And I, if that type of policy were to come from Minneapolis, I would definitely be interested in, you know, learning more about it and deciding whether that could work for Minneapolis as well. I don't think I could commit that I'm going to go one way or another at this point in time, but I want to get all the facts and figure out what, again, what, what is the right solution for all of the parties to address our housing crisis?
So like, a couple of years ago, the city commissioned a study from the Center for Urban and Regional Affairs at the University of Minnesota, and they looked at rent increases over time, and then they plotted on the same chart, 3%, 5%, 3% plus inflation, all, all the various permutations of what a rent control increase policy might entail. And generally, rent increases stay under, surprisingly, like, under that 3%. I wonder if you're familiar with that study? If, have, have you looked at it?
I am not. I have not looked at that study, but I appreciate you bringing it up, and it's something I'd like to look into more.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly counterintuitive. Rents just generally do not increase much above that 3% line. Luther, I think we may have come to the end. Is there, what are you hearing from people when you, when you talk to your, your neighbors and voters and residents in Ward 12?
Yeah. I mean, I think, starting where we started this conversation, public safety. Yeah, I think people want to be able to feel safe in their community, and I think that's really what people are asking me to bring to this race and to continue talking about and learning about as I engage with my fellow delegates and, and people in Ward 12. And so that's really probably the number one theme, and I think we're, we see that as a theme across the entire city right now. It's what we're all talking about. And then the reason why is because we need to, we need to do something. We need to do better. You know, like, I, I say this, and I've said this on my website, I believe that we need policing, but policing has to change. And so I want to be a part of investing in that change as a member of the city council.
Sometimes it feels like the crime rate is totally untethered from what we do, and it's just like, if it goes up nationally, we're going up here, we're, we're dealing with national trends. And I don't think it's crazy to, to say that our police department is broken in terms of its, its policies and procedures, but also like very dysfunctional in terms of its ability to, to maintain a staffing level. I, I think that's correct. I don't know. I, I just wonder how much you can do, Luther. You get elected, what, what do you, how much can you do, really?
Well, you know, I can make some noise and I can advocate, and, you know, I can listen to the community. And that's, you know, I think the best place that I would start and come from a point of humility. You know, I don't have all the answers, but I am willing to learn and listen and engage and also look to best practices. What's happening around the rest of the country that's working? And where can we, you know, improve here? You know, one of the things too is, you know, I want to make sure that we can partner with all of the stakeholders in public safety. In an area that's, I think, been really frustrating for me over the years is, you know, we've had a police union that has not, they have been a barrier and an obstacle to change. And I'd like to see, you know, a relationship where the police union is not an obstacle to change, but is willing to be a partner in change. And so that's an area where I would like to build and foster a relationship with the new leadership of the police union, you know, in conjunction with our new public safety leadership.
Luther, do you have any recommendations? This is, this is the last question that I always, I often ask. What are you enjoying? What kind, what hobby can you recommend to other people? A book or a movie, a specific place, a walk, an experience? What do you think other people will enjoy that you enjoy?
Yeah. You know, just the other day, I, I wanted to go for a walk, and because our sidewalks throughout the neighborhood are so slushy and snowy, and you have to walk over berms in order to get through each intersection, I went down and parked at 35th Street and West River Road. There's a small little parking lot there, and you can walk out to this little vista point that looks down the whole river gorge. And then from there, you can continue walking on the Winchell Trail. And so anyone that lives in Ward 12 probably knows about it, but if you don't, it's, you basically feel like you've left the city and you're kind of walking below grade, below River Road, so you don't really see any of the auto traffic. And all you see is out over the river gorge, and it was just peaceful and beautiful and I think a, a real treasure of our city and our ward. And, you know, probably speaks to why I love living where I live, is that I can drive a mile from my house down to the river and take my dog for a walk on a trail that feels like it's in the middle of nowhere.
I forgot to ask about sidewalks. What do you think about this municipal sidewalk clearing? You mentioned slushy sidewalks, and so that's what, what triggered it.
Yeah.
If you have a position.
You know, I, I, I don't see the city being able to manage a program like that, especially when we're having a, a hard time, you know, keeping all of the streets plowed wide enough that we can get emergency vehicles through. And so, you know, like I do as a neighbor, a, a property owner, if I know that someone on my block is having a hard time clearing the snow, I'll get out there and grab my shovel or snow blower and chip in and help. And I think I see a spirit of that throughout the city. But part of, you know, and what I've seen also, you know, is a great solution to this, especially, you know, for the seniors that live amongst us that are isolated and may not have the capabilities to shovel their own walks, is shoveling programs that are spurred on and organized by our neighborhood associations. And, you know, one of the other candidates in this race actually stepped forward very publicly last year and donated money to the local neighborhood organization, the Long Fellow Community Council, to help, to spur on a shoveling program that would benefit seniors. And so, you know, it's just kind of that spirit of helping each other out and leaning into that more, because I don't think a municipal shoveling program would be workable at this point in time for the city.
Did you just tout an accomplishment of a different candidate in this race? Is that what you did?
I did, yes.
Which candidate, which candidate did that?
Nancy Ford.
Wow. Well, I don't, I don't know if I'm going to be talking to Nancy.
Yeah. That's putting your money where your mouth is and helping support those that need help and, you know, an example of someone doing something good and stepping forward in our community, so.
We're, we're clearly not doing enough though, right? Whether you support municipal shoveling or not, like, the sidewalks in the city year after year are just not passable, not accessible. We're not doing enough, and I don't know if volunteerism.
Yeah.
And neighborhood orgs are, are up to the problem? So I wonder if, if not municipal shoveling, what?
You know, I think part of it is really leaning into our enforcement structure as well. So those people that are, are habitual non-shovelers and the city, you know, marks those and then sends out crews to shovel, I think we need to do a better job leaning into that program. And, you know, if, if you aren't going to shovel your walk and the city tags you, then you're going to pay whatever the charge is, depending on your square footage of street frontage, to get your walk shoveled. The intersections are a different story, and I think we've seen in our neighborhood in Ward 12, the city is coming through and cleaning out the intersections with a bigger truck or, you know, Bobcat type equipment to make sure that the intersections are passable. But you're right, it is, it continues to be an issue and, you know, it's, you know, we want to make sure that all of our sidewalks are accessible to everyone all year round. And right now, that's not the case. And so something definitely needs to be done.
Okay, Luther, I promised you 30 or 40 minutes, and I've given you 50 minutes.
Well, thank you so much, John. I've appreciated the opportunity to meet you finally and to, to have this conversation.
Yeah. It was lovely to meet you, Luther. Luther Ranheim is a candidate for city council in Ward 12 here in Minneapolis. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.